Back to the garden fence.
Yeah.
Your thought is something easily removable?
Yes. Just like, you know, plastic even to just stick in the ground that has like the pretty.
At this point, I would probably wait till.
That's that's what I was thinking and just like when they plant flowers in the spring, I'll even go help plant flowers over there hanging at basket, whatever. Um.
Yeah. I mean, I think I would see what what happens with this.
But either way, the signs are there now and. Um, if we need to find ones that are a bit more reflective than those ones. Then we can explore that too, but I figured at least ones from Guilford hardware were better than not having any up there at all. Alright, so that's that. So then some of the DOT updates minus what is on the agenda already. So the VIP, um. The village partnership. Um, so I reached out to Mike and at the last meeting I had sent him like. A whole list of things and he connected me to all the people that I needed to talk to in the whole branch of DOT. So that was very productive and I'm very glad that I did that. But um, he sent a message to the project manager just to double check, um, but he thinks that. How it's looking right now is with the things progressing with the heavy treatment that's coming through town. That he believes that they have included three crossings with the required landings into the project with minimal cost share from the town. Um, because they're already coming through, but he is, he sent to my message and is double checking like what the. What does minimal cost share mean?
And these are three crosswalks?
Mm-hmm.
Raised crosswalk?
I don't know if they're raised, but they'll have the.
They're required to have the the cutout where.
Yeah, so they're all ADA and tip tip down.
Right.
To.
Any flashing lights?
Um, I don't know, but I can ask.
Do we know where they're planning on putting them?
Yeah.
I. Think. It was. By Robinson's, by here and by the gym.
The gym.
Okay, so nothing in front of the historical society.
Well, the one that was here was in between.
In between, yeah.
Yeah.
But just so they're not putting any type of curves right in front of the historical society to hinder the parking.
Yeah, but they can't do it in front of a parking area, that was the.
There's no landing spot.
Right.
That's the problem. Because even if you be in front of the historical society.
Right.
It's time that they.
Well, and if they put it like, well, I guess they they probably have rules about how far it can be, well, no. From an intersection because there's crosswalks that intersections all the time, so. Maybe if we had it further down by the Appalachian Trail where people don't park. If. That was. The case.
It wouldn't be this side that I would imagine would be the problem, it would be the other side, that would be. Issue, I would think.
Well, it's it's this side because we have parking out here. So that the old crosswalk that's there can't be anymore.
And there's actually a decent landing place next to the Blue Goose. This is the driveway cutout there, so that would be pretty much across from the ATC.
Yeah.
Right.
That could work.
Right.
If there's no rule about the intersection.
When he calls me back to confirm everything that he talks to about the. Um, with the project manager, I'll double check, um. Okay, uh, the next piece. From DOT would be the beach culvert, so, um, he. Mike, um, had emailed me back and he was like. Oh, um, I'll include the work order for that road. I'm like, I don't need your work order to tell me that culvert isn't fixed, that culvert is not fixed. He goes, oh, well, it should have been, and I'm like, well, I'm telling you it's not. So I went down there and took pictures of what it looks like and I'm like. It literally is three quarters of the way full on one side and just drizzling out the other side. So I sent him pictures this morning, actually la- last night. And I said. I don't know what your work order is gonna accomplish here because every culvert's numbered and I have no inventory of their culvert. So I have no idea what number culvert that is. And I was like, either way, it's it's not fixed. And so he called me this morning and he's coming to meet me on Tuesday at the beach. So he can look at this culvert because apparently my pictures were not good enough. To say that this culvert, but he's like, we have to come up with some sort of agreement here and I'm like.
Have him just look at the fact that it's been ditched now.
That's right.
Down the hill, so all the, like, if we do get a storm.
It's a bog over there, that's a whole long bog.
Yeah.
You can't not have a culvert, so a bog. Well, when he sees it.
Twenty years ago, that culvert used to extend all the way.
Into the lake.
Into the lake and then it rotted off, so they just kept cutting it bad. So that tells me that the rest of it is probably no good.
Right, well, their original response was, oh, that culvert's not bad, bad, it was just plugged and we unplugged it. So I went over there and I'm like, nobody did nothing, like, nothing of the sort, nobody touched anything to this culvert. You can't even get to the end of it for starters because there's so much stuff. I literally was crawling underneath the bushes to try to get a picture of the water because I'm like.
See if you can get him to bring the head of the maintenance.
He is the head of the region.
But bring the guy from Guilford, who's in charge of this area. To be part of that meeting too.
Well, I don't know who is coming with him, but he said, we, can you meet us at the beach at nine o'clock on Tuesday? And I said, sure can, so, well, I'll have some definite answers on Tuesday. Um, and then the other DOT piece will be the weight restriction ordinance, which is already on the agenda and then. Uh. Uh, do you plan on doing a yard sale update?
Yes.
Okay, so I will leave that to you. Um, road committee update, we had, um. So we've had two meetings now since our last like board meeting, so we're trying to meet. We're meeting again next week, um, so we're trying to meet a little bit more frequently to try to try to get some more accomplished. Um, Chad is going to start ditching on Monday on the Duggish Road. That's where he'll be starting. Um, and so now we have the first, what, two miles of the North Guilford Road?
Yeah.
Finished, so the inventory for the first two miles, starting from the Abbott Monson line. Further, working our way back this way. And we have like three culverts that are like, okay.
Okay.
So, yeah. So, um. But it's, it's gonna be so nice to have this all documented and where the ditches are and where the tree trimming needs to be and. Everything, um. So that, that. I have not had a chance to research any more of the alert systems. Um, that we kind of talked briefly about last meeting that was like, uh, Up Ahead, I think is what it was called. Um, the text messaging kind of thing.
Yeah.
Um, so I haven't had a chance to look at any more of those. Um, the EV charter map, so Jade and I. Talked about, so originally Jade was gonna try to co- like make it herself. The actual thing herself, but now she's thinking that maybe we should just have a company. That makes signs, like she provides what she wants on the sign and then you just do it. Um, so she is researching different companies that do that right now.
Okay.
Um. Um. So, uh, more on the parking, I guess. Uh, the parking area on Water Street, I did reach out to MMA about the liability of owning a parking lot. Um, and they forwarded my message along to the next available attorney, so I have not heard back yet, um, but I did do that. Um, and then. I just wanted, oh, so the fire department meeting. That's, we talked about last meeting, so, um. So pretty much any days. Friday through Tuesday. They could, all of the officers could meet, but if they do Thursdays, they have EMT classes and then Bob wouldn't be. Able to join us and Bob is the, um, EMT person EMS director.
Okay.
So I felt like, and he's been doing a lot of the grant work too, so I feel like he would be good to have part of that conversation.
What dates again for this?
Um, Friday through Tuesday.
Pretty over the weekend to Tuesday, okay.
So like. And if we did something like on a Monday or Tuesday or something, I could just drive up for whatever and.
Whenever.
Time of day for you guys, yes. Evenings.
Five o'clock in the morning.
I'm not driving over here to meet with you guys at five o'clock in the morning, I would have to leave my house by three forty-five.
Yeah.
No, I already told you it's too many here. Um.
I, I mean, you're here on Tuesdays, if if we could do it on Tuesday.
Yeah.
Afternoon, evening.
Oh, we got a lot of Tuesdays on.
We do have a lot of Tuesdays for road committee, um. And like, I really don't like, if, if I only have to be here for a couple hours in the evening, it won't kill me.
Okay.
I'll be here on Fridays, we'll do it Friday afternoon.
We could, um, I just didn't know how all of you guys felt about spending your Friday nights. Meet.
Just another day.
Just another day.
I feel the same way, but I didn't know how everybody else felt, so.
And we'll have it over to Bob, Andy Gora.
Right?
Uh, yeah, I can do just about. Any Friday, next week and the week after, not the third one.
Yeah, I've handed the thirty there, um, so the nineteenth or the twenty-sixth, I would. How's the twenty-sixth?
I can do anytime after two thirty, whenever they're available is fine.
Okay, because, um.
I'm headed to Southern in Greenville, the next few weeks at least, until they hire a full-time teacher. So, um, after, I would say three thirty would be safe for me.
Well, I'm really gonna say like, it's gonna have to be like five if we want, like.
That's great.
Yeah, fill in.
Yeah, for everybody else, yeah, yeah, okay.
So, um, let's just say the twenty-sixth at five, I'll confirm with Chuck and then once I confirm, I will send you guys an email to confirm. That it's all set in stone then. Um. So, just. Um, one little update from the fire department before then is, um. We're just waiting for parts to be finished for the the dry hydrant and that will be. That will be done, um, and then just a little shout out to them for the month of August because that was crazy. They had nineteen or, or no, twenty-one calls in the month of August, so. Pretty crazy and some of those calls were over eight hours long, so. In some of the most ridiculous weather possible.
Yeah, and locations.
Yeah, yep, yep.
Seen lots of good, uh. Press on on those, I I think it speaks well for their professionalism.
I think so too, and I've had a lot of people reach out to me to say, hey, just by the way, say thank you to your fire department.
Right.
So, go then. Um. Uh, town on property, so. Like I said before, um, we talked about having a list of town on property. A few months back, I just hadn't had time to get it together and I. Just happened to come across something that answered some of my questions, so I'm like, well, it's right here in front of me, I'm gonna make a list. And so that's everything that's tax acquired and ta- town owned and then I actually included, um, the utility district too, not that. The town owns them or anything, it's just good knowledge to have because they are. An asset to the town too, really, when it comes to what they own. Um.
Were any of these, um, owned after the the new law? That we.
The ta- these tax acquired, um. No, but I still think that it applies to these.
That it does apply.
I think so, okay. So, and, um, if you see over in the information, I included what year they became tax acquired, if there's a building on it and what the. Re- like what the bad taxes are on those three properties, so. Um, and the only thing that I don't know, and I actually wanted to talk about this to Brian, but what do we own on the Packard Road? That's twenty-two acres.
How many acres?
Twenty-two. It's labeled in Trio as a flowage.
My son was, they used to own a piece of land. That was. On the, I don't know, the Carol Falls Road.
Mm-hmm.
Right, where the picnic area is, on the other side of the road, they used to own a, it could be part of that. Is the Packard Road.
We'll have to look at it.
That was all. Over there, that was all bog. That they voted to sell it once years ago. But I. I looked on the. Computer here a while ago and that's not listed over there. The river and off, the Packard Road went with it.
Alright, well, that's, that's the only one that I don't fully know. What it is or where it came from or what to do with it or, but it's twenty-two acres, so.
If it's a flowage, it could be largely, um.
Water.
Right, unusable.
Right. Which, if it's along the river, would make sense.
Or if it's, I mean, there's a bog in there.
Well, yeah. Um. But yeah, that's all it's listed as. It is, um, flowage, there's no deed, number or nothing, so I might have to do some digging to. To figure out that one, but I put it on here anyways because we do own it.
It's on the tax maps?
Yep. And then.
What's, where's twenty-seven and twenty-nine Greenville?
Um.
Next to the gym, right?
Yeah, one of them is the. Cemetery.
Oh, right.
And then I think.
Gym's thirty-five, so how come that'd be twenty-something? Two, twenty-seven and twenty-three?
Maybe twenty-nine. The little cemetery next to the.
Oh, the church, okay.
Yeah.
And then maybe the tennis court?
Yeah, I'm thinking about, it's the tennis court.
Okay.
Because they're.
Yeah, they're kind of twenty-seven and twenty-nine.
We don't, we don't know that the, uh, acreage of the. Lake Road Cemetery, what's the Lake Road Cemetery? Is that the one next to the church?
No, that's the one.
Headed up town.
Headed up town.
But we don't know what the acreage is.
We don't know what the acreage is, we don't know what the.
I've heard there's a lot of, uh.
And it's, it doesn't even have its own tax map number, it just says number eleven sem.
Yeah.
That's it, it's not even in Trio, so I left a note for the tax assessor to ask him about that and see if he can help me come up with. Something for that.
Well, thank you for this, wow, um. Is the ninety-six Tenny Hill, the one, the yellow? House up there?
Yes.
Okay, so that is now town, okay.
And. Yeah. So at least now there's a formal list of everything the town owns in altogether.
Be nice to get rid of a lot of it.
What's the wood log?
That, they.
Across from my house for the utilities district. It is just now becoming a wood log.
All right, if you own. Twenty-two acres, it's tax acquired. On the Packard Road. Can you cut the wood off it? And get the.
Well, the thing is, is whatever.
Give that to the farmer owner.
This Packard Road property is not tax acquired.
So we can do whatever we want.
So we can do whatever we want with that one.
Okay.
I don't know how we got it, but if we had, the town's owned it long enough that it's not considered tax acquired anymore.
And you wood on it, make sure that they cut.
Right.
I imagine most of it's sure, yeah.
Yeah, so I'll try to investigate some of these other properties that we're not a hundred percent sure about, but. Thanks, that's, seems good, that's that. Um. Let me cross up some of this stuff. Um, so the cameras at the transfer station, I had called secret security. Like a month ago, when we talked about it the first time and they were supposed to be sending somebody out. And everything, so when we called them back, they were like, oh, yeah, we sent somebody out, their GPS got them lost and all of this stuff, which apparently means. Don't ever call back and say, hey, we couldn't find you or anything, there was just nothing. Um, so they're re-sending somebody out when they're sending them to the town office so we can meet with them and go down there with them. Um, so.
I would have thought that when they got lost, they would have just driven to the town office?
They did, but we were closed, so. And they didn't have service to call anybody and they don't have anybody else's number on the account. Which now. They have my cell phone number.
Okay, we'll get to it around next trip.
Yeah. So anyways, the cameras at the transfer station, we'll figure it out. And then, um, so tomorrow I'm going to attend a workshop about. Um, the Maine Highlands Integrated Response Network. People are putting together and it's basically. All of the town managers and different. Nonprofits in the community coming to talk about what's gonna happen in our community when some of the funding cuts. Happen because what's gonna happen is the funding for like food stands in La Heave and. Um, the, that's gonna be cut in the, at a federal level. And the income is going to change, but the general assistance isn't going to change, so they'll be. Coming to towns essentially to to get help instead and basically we're just kind of brainstorming for the day. Figuring out what to do about that because in a lot of ours, and so, um, they actually gave me some. Um. Breakdowns, which after tomorrow I'll have like one cater directly to Monson. But it basically shows how, the percentage of how many people in Monson use some sort of federal assistance. And what happens to these people if they just, there is none. Um, so. If any of you are super interested in any of that stuff, you can come with me, if not, I'll come back and tell you all about it. Oh, but it's in Dover tomorrow, so I won't actually be in the office tomorrow, I will come up. Tomorrow night to finish doing some things, but that's where I'll be tomorrow and then. For my last piece is, I am gonna take a vacation for most of the week, except for Tuesday, the first week of November. Yeah. Um. I will come back for election day, so I will be here on Tuesday, but the rest of the week I'm going to be completely. Off the grid, away from everything and everybody, so if something happens, you'll have to call Marie.
Are you going to kill something?
Hopefully something. Hopefully a couple of somethings, it's it's the opening week of traveling season too, so.
Yeah.
I'm gonna go. Up there for an entire, well, Friday to the following Monday, so that'll be.
Good.
A breath of fresh air.
Wilderness is good.
Uh, yeah, yeah. Um, and I think that's everything that I had for my town needs report.
That was. I'm just checking off all the stuff that I had, right? Alright, um, select word reporters.
So the yard sale was a big success, we made thirteen thousand dollars, um. There was a lot of people that said it actually was the best that they had been to. When we had a lot of people that came up on Friday to shop and. At shopping, they decided they wanted to volunteer, so we had some volunteers throughout the weekend. I know exactly how I feel about it. But everybody else has to give some input as to whether to continue it or not. If we are going to continue it, there has got to be a yard sale committee formed. So that we have specific people that are. Gonna be held accountable.
Yeah.
When they volunteer for stuff.
Yeah.
Cause. Without the Legion's help this year, we would have been struggling.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
You know, shout out to them and all the volunteers, we got a couple of them in the room right now, Sandra and Brian. Along with everybody else, so.
Me too, James.
I mean, there were, there were a fair number, most of them, um, through the Legion, or many of them through the Legion, but.
Yeah.
There was, uh. It was. What would you say, three, three weeks, we, we, the week to set up?
Pretty much three weeks.
Of the sale, the weekend of the sale and then the week to break it down.
So where did all the extra stuff go that wasn't sold?
The good stuff, we're keeping and putting back in the trailers if we do it next year. And then the rest of it got tossed.
Okay.
And we did a pretty good job of separating, you know, burn pile stuff, metal stuff, demo stuff, just to. Cut down on the, on the fees, but it was, we did learn some valuable lessons.
Yeah, we did.
About. How to make it more efficient. What sells, what doesn't sell.
Like when we go, like if if we do it again and we accept donations, being a little, uh. Big here and. And even. I mean, if we do somebody a favor of hauling something off to get the rest of the stuff, then separating it at. The trailers instead of packing it all in the trailers and then having to go through it all the week before the sale. To get it up there, uh, which we did.
For.
High grade, a lot of it, but, um. Yeah, I think we learned some, some good stuff.
Yeah, I was amazed how much we. Brought stuff up after you picked up, we had some more things and the gym was just. Incredible.
And that's, and that's going. From not having it for two years. To starting back up, so I'm sure there was still a big fan following the Legion that didn't really know about it and that's another thing too is. Do some earlier advertising.
Right.
Wow.
We did have several inquiries about if we picked up donations and.
Yeah.
So there were, there was some interest in, you know, I I don't think we're having trouble generating.
Stuff?
That much stuff again, um. If we decide to go forward with it, I I think that's the big thing, I mean.
Yeah.
As far as the fundraising for the gym roof, um, would it be a good idea to to post just like. You know, a thank you to everybody who helped out and contributed to the, um, yard, the yard sale. How much was earned and then maybe that link that, um, for donations that was on the. Was it us?
Oh, yeah.
GoFundMe?
Yeah. Yeah, we think of that.
Hard to be close.
Yeah.
Get more.
People liked that it was. People liked that it was. If it wasn't going to the Legion, that it was, they knew what it was.
Going to.
We weren't.
Right.
Just.
Right.
I don't know, doing whatever with it, it had a specific purpose, I mean, lots of people, you know, they'd round up to the nearest twenty, nearest ten or.
Yeah.
They felt it was going to a big cost.
Yeah.
And that, that would be something that would have to be decided each year early on, what the money was gonna go towards, and obviously, we want it to be. Something that is beneficial to the whole town, and that people will get behind.
Okay.
I, I'd be in support of, of doing it again, I mean, I know that it was a lot on you especially, and I, you know, I think if we could. Form a committee, and then from that committee, pick a chairperson or whatever to kind of take charge of it, whether that's. One of us, or, or somebody from, from outside this, you know, the select board, um. I would still be willing to, to be heavily involved.
Oh, and you guys knew it.
I don't see how. Based on the success of it, at least until we have a roof on the gym, I don't see how we can.
Right. It's, it's just hard to find another fundraiser that brings in the same kind of money at the same pace.
Right.
It, it's a lot of work, especially for you, so when you asked me if I wanted to do it again, I was like, I don't know, do you wanna do it again? But it's.
Well, we gave you the easy job, all you had to do was take the money.
No, I love stuff like the weekend before too.
I, I, I don't know if that's how you're, you were feeling about it, but that's sort of where, where I am, I, I don't see how.
Yeah.
We can. Ask taxpayers to fund it, and so we've gotta find a way to pay for the gym roof, and this is a way that doesn't impact. Everybody.
Mm-hmm.
I guess.
Yeah, I agree.
So I don't know how we, we have a very short list of, of. People, i- it seems to be growing, people that are willing to be involved, and so, um. I don't know, we can beat the bushes and try to find a group to put together to.
Put it out on Facebook with a signup sheet, if anybody would be interested in.
Yeah.
Is this something that we want to do right now, or something we wanna do in the future, like when do we want people to sign up for this here committee?
Give me one week.
I would think sooner rather than later, you don't wanna wait until.
Momentum is there.
Right, and you don't wanna wait into too long, because. It takes a.
Well, Lauren knows I'm gonna have to be on this committee too, so I'm just trying to figure out, like, am I gonna be on this committee next week or next month?
No, no, I mean, I think we could. We could probably wait.
A little off, yeah.
We could probably wait till the first of the year really, but the sooner.
Okay.
Well, no, it's, the sooner the better, in case we're gonna start collecting.
Right, that's what I was thinking, you don't wanna do that.
But, and the people, you know, not everybody that's gonna be involved has to be.
On.
On the committee, we're gonna get a pile, I'm not gonna say a pile, but we're gonna get a handful of people that are gonna volunteer.
Hmm.
And not be on the committee.
Right.
And, and you know, then we can, the Legion served food, that was a success out of the, um, out of another building, um. That shall remain nameless, uh, until we figure out how that works, um.
And I think they would more than likely like to do that again, if they do have the yard sale, I mean, they brought in, I think Jim said a little over four hundred dollars. Which isn't bad for a rainy weekend, telling Barbies hot dogs.
Yeah, and at some points, it was pouring outside, so, yeah.
Um.
And.
I was, oh.
Also. We'll figure out a way to repay the Legion, since they. Did all their services for free and wanted all the no, money to go through the gym roof.
And they were, uh. Especially like Matt would set up. Was loading trucks, bringing loads up, Brian was helping us break stuff down, and Cindy, of course, um. Uh, like Jim Wentworth was not even a resident.
Right, right.
Spent the weekend with us, like, so I think, um. Uh, you know, I think it's, it was a s- success, any way you look at it, I think. Other than generated a lot of. Trash, but.
All of this can be fine too, and so it's less work.
Less waste.
Less waste.
Yeah, first time, so it's.
The hardest.
Yeah, does it have to be, I'm just looking at our town committees, like a. Formal, informal town committee, or temporary, or how do we, how's that work? Because if we, you know, we include.
Can we call them a committee without them being a committee, we did that?
I know, but I'm just thinking like to. It would maybe be good at each of our meetings, like we go through each committee, like what's happening, updates and stuff throughout the year. I don't know if that would be helpful, or.
Yeah, no, I mean, maybe, that makes sense. But what do you have to do to?
Make a town committee.
Right, I don't know, take it off and say you'll be on it?
Well, we have to sign people on committees, right?
If they're an official committee.
Yeah, yeah.
Or just have a group of people who just.
Love the yard sale.
With the, with their heart, would love to just be more actively involved.
Yeah, I kinda like that.
It would be nice to get someone from. The, the group that's raising money for the, like Aaron wants kind of that person, but.
Through the historical society, yeah. Okay.
So Aaron's just gonna be the chairperson.
You know, once you're in that role, it's hard to get out.
Yeah.
Eric, do you have anything else?
Uh, I think that was it.
Okay. Done with?
Uh, I mean, I think I already had it.
He's like, I joined the party already.
Alrighty, okay, I don't have very much, just covered everything, um. Um, we talked, last meeting was mentioned of the bond money, you were gonna check with the bond council about. How we could use.
Um, yeah, so I'm still in the process of that, cause I gave him some reports, but he needed some different reports, and so, we're still going back and forth. But he, he thinks that we should be able to use it for what I want to use it for, because the purpose is still the same.
Right.
He just wants to verify the amount, so that's all.
Good. And speaking of Jim, manstand, we talked last time, um, hus, loo- looking into insurance requirements to renovate that?
Um, yeah, so I sent him a message, um, on Tuesday. So I haven't heard back from him, but I, I did reach out.
You're on it, oh, alright, and. Have you heard any more updates on the fire department building grant?
Um, no about the grant itself, um, but we have been talking a little bit more with the ranters about the potential purchase of land. Um, and working with the engineer, trying to come up with. Something that's gonna work for both of us, so that there's room for expansion in the future, if we ever get to that point, because I don't want to purchase land. Put a fire station on it, and then fifty years down the road, have to move the fire station because you can't expand there either. Um, and there's not gonna be any more land in the village district in fifty years than there is right now, so probably less. Um, so they mapped out, um, three hundred by three hundred, which is a little bit over two acres. So we're thinking that that might work, um, when the engineer is here on the twenty-second to look at the, the floor, we're gonna go up and walk. Um, the property to see. Um, what, what it looks like, and where we can put things, and, um. Corinne walked around up there and kind of did a draft. Yeah, um, to see like where, in septic design and stuff like that, to see. Where we can put things, um, in relation to, because the tower's also gonna go up there too. Which would be an ideal spot for a fire station right by the communications tower, so, um.
AKA cell tower.
Right, right. Um. So we're still working on that. Um.
Okay.
And I, hopefully, well, jeez, next month is October, so the next time. I was told that I would probably hear something is around October, so hopefully at the next meeting, I might have a little bit more information.
And any movement on the old fire truck?
No. I know.
Put it on Facebook?
I know, like, just come get it.
Yeah.
Like, if you want it, you have it.
Yeah. Come up some snazzy advertisement, you know?
Right? Uh.
Parade ready.
I mean, there is a. A magazine that goes out, I think monthly, that is strictly fire and rescue vehicles.
Do you know what it's called?
I've got it written down somewhere, I talked to the Rockwood Fire Chief about it.
Hmm, correct, well, you let me know.
Okay.
Okay. And it's, and it was still listed with, um. Is it Alabama?
Yeah.
Is it actually listed?
I think so.
Alright, and my last but not least, you're gonna love this one, so Elias will.
Um, oh, that's on the agenda, that's why I didn't talk about it.
It is?
Yeah, so the paving quote is included in.
Oh.
So that's why I didn't talk about it, I'm like, wait a minute, what?
Alright, alright, very good. Thank you, alright, town committee reports, center of beautification?
Well, beautification met. Yes, two days ago, and we would like. At this point, the flags, the town flags that got reordered have been charged to us, which brings our. Um, town funds down to a ridiculous, you know, low number, we think that the. Gym roof committee should buy those flags, pay for those flags, since they're getting the proceeds from the sale of them. And that's our decision, we're sticking to it, otherwise, it won't be any flowers next year.
I will talk it over with the committee.
Okay. And the hundred and seventy-five that we've already, that we took in from selling flags, we're happy to give to you, we made the first batch. But give to them, I should say, but that was kind of a big hit on our account, Marty and I had a conversation.
It was just a placeholder, though, we just didn't know where else to.
Well, we talked about it today, we needed, we knew we needed to order the flags.
We knew it was a prompt conversation.
Yeah.
So what was the total?
Seven hundred and something this time.
Yeah, it was a chunk of money, we paid for picnic table out of our, um, town allocation this year. And putting that on top of it left us with. Probably nothing, yeah.
Didn't give you an exact number?
Um.
What is the way I?
It's in the Google Drive, um, maybe I can.
I just, I saw it, cause I was asking, and you know.
It's on, um, it would be under, in the C's section.
I can't look it up.
It would be to card member services, would be where it was paid to.
Yeah. It was like the bottom of the page, and I had to escalate it, cause it was kind of wonky, um.
It's in the, um, beautification folder to, in the finance.
Oh, fine.
If you're past C's, then you're way beyond it.
Okay.
It's all profitable.
It was under eighty, I wanna say it was seven forty-seven, something like that.
Yeah.
Not seven fifty. And the, the flags we've been selling, historical society is selling them quite. Quite well, I think, you guys have been selling some too.
Yeah.
So.
I can handle it.
I know, I was just gonna hand it over to you.
Cause I know exactly what you want.
Thank, I got it, seven ninety-two and fifty cents.
Oh, was, okay, I was thinking about it. But then you looked it up.
And, um, did I put the, the poles that, that we ordered, and the hardware?
Yeah, that's all in there.
Okay, so does that, does that include that number that you just?
I don't know.
Well, the brackets are for the banners.
That was separate.
Oh, that is, okay, right, alright.
It was separate.
And that's fine, that's, that, those are funds we intended to spend.
Okay.
Um. The only other thing we talked about in beautification yesterday was painting the fire hydrants. They look. Ugly. They don't really get used, I understand they're still hooked to the water system, but we were thinking of giving them. Perhaps comical paint jobs to, um.
Distraught, no.
Or maybe just paint.
Okay.
They're not hooked to the water system.
They're not.
No, no. The ones, the ones on Water Street are tapped into the canal. But nothing's actually hooked into the water system itself.
So none of the hydrants are hooked to the system, so we could go back to our sculpture idea.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Minus the two on Water Street.
Okay.
Cool.
Sculpture?
Well, we were thinking of using the hydrants as basis for sculptures.
Small.
Small sculptures. Anything to make them look less like ugly.
They should be taken out.
Our idea might be less expensive, but you're probably right.
Oh. It. They don't work, they're never gonna work. We should.
Okay, topic for another day, but. That was if beautification collaborative hasn't met, and.
And that, that was collaborative as well?
No, collaborative hasn't met yet.
Oh, they haven't, okay, I was gonna ask, okay. Alright, and we don't have cemetery, or do we still have a, a functioning rec committee?
I think they do just summer fest, and I think they do some fall stuff. Like fall fest, or something, they do like pumpkin carving or something, and like, I think.
Davis can do it.
Dana's about the only one doing anything, and she's about done being the only one doing anything, so.
Uh, we've got to get together with the rec committee right off, and overhaul the basement of the gymnasium.
That will probably ultimately.
Well, the rec, the rec committee owns. All of the sporting goods down.
I know when, when Stacy was active with the rec committee, um. She tried to work with, um, the previous town manager, um, to, to deal with that basement, but. No shelves were allowed to be purchased, so she refused to.
Hmm.
Organize the basement, and there were no shelves.
Well, she's still interested in doing that, I would gladly help her.
Um.
Cindy and I talked about, Cindy would come and help me go through some of the stuff that she knows. Needs to just go, and has been, a lot of that stuff down there is just junk.
Well, a lot of it, and I, I know we have a, a large.
Like, there's Halloween decorations down there that are like molded and all stuck together, and just.
Yeah.
But now there is a lar- larger open area since we kept rid of some stuff for the other sale.
Got all those tables, right?
Tables are all gonna be gone, the big tanks gone.
So.
And everything on that back wall.
It's not gone, gone. It's out of that space.
Right, right, there's a hole there anyway.
Alright, we'll pursue that thought, um, okay, on to CEO report. I should.
I mean. You just wanna talk, I'll listen, how's that? I can't.
So we're just looking at your report, um. So last time about the Robinsons lighting, um. I think we, we were saying before we could proceed. It might be prudent, it would be prudent, if you could send certified letters to Mr. Robinson. And just so that we have that documentation. I don't know if there's.
No, I, I think that's important, I, I think the idea of, of hand delivering stuff is good, except there's denial. hand delivering stuff is good except there's deniability when we never received that letter, but if it's go certified, then we have the paper trail to say, yep, you were served, you, you were sent this letter on this date, the second letter on this date. You haven't done anything with the lights in multiple years now. I know it's kind of resetting the clock, but I don't see that we have another option.
Yeah, before we can really move on it as a violation, what I do.
Have we gotten anywhere with a file system in the town office? This stuff, like all of your copies of all your emails, nothing?
Like copies of emails? No. But like, any, like letters or anything like that? I have copies of.
I think that file should include copies of any email involved in any of these cases. I'm assuming, I'm assuming when you have a phone call, you like write notes as to, okay, so like copies of those.
Otherwise, I'm not gonna remember.
Okay, that's, and that's good that you're writing that down, but we should have little copy of that in that file too.
I mean, each one of these.
So.
Yeah.
If Kent's gone away for something and we have a question, we have to be able to access that information.
So if somebody emails him a question and he responds, you want a copy of that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or it could just.
And, um, heaven forbid, we don't want anything to happen to you, but if something did happen to you, then we, we don't have any information because he took it with him. So all of these violations we're dealing with.
I, I could understand. I'm just trying to get behind the whole, like, if somebody says, um.
No, not if somebody says, oh, do I need a permit for this? A yes or no answer? No, but when you're calling.
Okay, that's what I was asking. And then you said yes, and I'm like, that seems ridiculous.
Especially violation.
But, well, yeah, absolutely.
Paper trail of every communication with violation.
Totally understand that aspect of it. I was hung up on the, do I need a permit? And now you want me to print that out and find a file for this? For every single question that he ever asked. And then I was like, why are you doing that to me? But I understand what you are asking now.
And one question about Tommy Atkins. Did he have a steel fence up when you went down there?
He did.
He did?
He did.
Good.
A proper steel fence?
I didn't look to see if it was buried two inches into the ground. Most steel fences aren't, even though that's what's required.
Has he gotten a permit since?
No.
Still not.
He's now got a condition and has a backfiller.
What's your, what's your next step?
Sending him a letter telling him, okay, you need permit after the fact now. It's gonna cost this much.
And when you were down there, did you take measurements off from the shoreline?
No, but I can do that tomorrow.
I think it might be an off-the-lion, but looking at it from different spots, it looks like it's close.
I have a hundred foot tape in the truck just for that reason.
Question on the dangerous building on Route fifteen.
You'll get shot.
Yeah. If the owner says they don't have the money to repair it or remove it.
Oh.
Good question also.
Um. I was just reading about this.
Could they potentially?
There's a waiver that they can sign that allows us to come onto the property to dispose of it and then they pay us back.
Well, if they can't afford to pay it, so rather than get in this whole big circle thing again, could they potentially sell the property to the town at an extremely discounted price and then the town would own it? And then we can sell it and make money off it. To avoid that whole cluster of rules and regulations regarding tax required property, so we don't drag the cell for three, four years.
Yes.
If they'd be willing to, rather than sell, sell it to the town at discounted price, rather than have to deal with the taxes owed on it when we start demolishing it. Offer it to them.
Yeah, I, I think that you guys can't do that yourself. Like, it would have to go to the town to be able to purchase property.
That makes sense. I can see that.
But would he entertain the idea?
Would he? Is that what you said?
Yeah, well, you can ask him if he'd entertain the idea and then you could bring it to the town.
Yeah, yeah. And like that whole thing with the dangerous building, if they're willing to, um, allow us to remove a dangerous building while they still maintain it, they can make payments to the town at however process the town, you guys decide to pay, like, how much property is that building?
That's not a real big lot. Make your do, maybe?
Not that way.
If that. But it's an existing law, huh?
Yeah.
Or even the brook.
The brook is gonna be a problem.
But, uh, in the fire department burn it.
That's.
They said no because it's too close to the brook.
That's what I wondered, um.
I've seen, that's more close than mine.
You know, on these dangerous buildings, if we can find a way to work with the residents rather than battle them, make everybody's life a lot easier.
Yeah, but there's also like where if the, the people are willing to allow us to help, maybe it's a matter of, well, there would be somebody for several contractors that would be willing to help demolish it if we paid for like the dumpsters or something. Because if, we wouldn't have to follow the same strict guidelines as a dangerous building if the owner's in agreeance, that it's, it needs to be removed.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. So did you catch that, Kent? Because it will probably be you that ends up talking to him. Okay, so that's good?
Yep.
Okay, all right.
Anything else? All right, on to old business paving quotes.
Um, out of like the five or six people that I reached out to for quotes, I actually only ended up getting two quotes back. Um, and this is for five culverts on the Elliott'sville Road and one on the North Gilbert Road, which the one on the North Gilbert Road, we're hoping to do in the next couple of weeks. Um, and I have one quote from Cameron Paving for fifteen thousand five hundred and fifty, which is significantly lower than whatever last quote Bill had originally given us for this day at least, so. Yes, so, um, fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand five hundred and fifty from Cameron Paving. So it's six culverts total to re-repaved.
Where, where was the other one? I'm sorry.
On the North Gilbert Road. It'll be almost in front of Kerry.
Right.
And then, um, the other one is from SDP Sean Thing Paving, um, same thing. And it's for fourteen thousand. So.
Do we have any history with that or no?
Cameron has done a lot of paving in this area.
They have a property on the North Gilbert Road.
That.
Wherever these.
Right by the culvert, right by the culvert, yeah.
I believe they're the ones that did Robinsons.
And they've done a couple of projects in Dover recently too.
Is there a difference between the materials or anything in the quotes?
No, I don't think so.
I'd say as close as they are, there's probably no difference. It's just a matter of what they think they can do it for.
Right.
And I think both companies have a good reputation.
Yeah, this is, I mean, it's the same.
Yeah, I mean, just.
And I personally feel like we should go with the lower one with the option of if the lower one can't fit us in in a reasonable time, maybe paying a little bit extra for the person that can get to us sooner. If it's not like, if there's a huge gap, like say they can't get us in this fall and they, uh, they can't.
Yeah.
Because there's not a huge gap in, in the price.
Yeah, and those culverts really.
Yeah, I, I think they need to be paved until fall winter, so.
Okay. So we should go with S, S T P?
Yep.
Oil, machine and seconding, oh.
Um, I mean, you can if you would like to.
Fourteen thousand millibit from S T P paving.
A second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Is there any? Okay.
Um.
Did we do the ATV?
I was gonna say, can we use?
Oh, yeah. Oh, I wish I could right over now. Sorry, I should've done first.
Fifty times.
Sure.
No, you've been very patient.
Yes, you have.
Well, you know.
We appreciate your efforts here.
We just get into the agenda.
Okay, um, I have. He's sponsored, so I didn't know. I didn't know what, where it's the end of the season if we just want to create this one for the season and have it signed, so we have something for this year.
Like, one and a half or, or, yeah, once full season next year and the, and the, when is the end of ATV?
Well, there's still some hunters that use them in November. But after that, he, after way back then, the number goes.
But there's no, is there like a date that trails?
We have our last weeded in September at the club.
Okay.
Yeah, so they don't, like, it's basically until the snow comes. And that's how this is worded, until the last lasting snow of twenty twenty-five.
Um, it's the same verbiage, um, as would the Abbott, it's words, okay.
Yeah.
And last time we talked with Larry, we had brought up the idea of the three-year contract versus the yearly. We never made a decision on that, did we?
We stuck to one year this year, um, with Abbott. And then with the idea of going three years next year.
Okay, so we can do the same thing with you guys.
Yeah.
That'll save you to have them come to a meeting every year.
And you learn a lot, you learn a few things.
And that was town clerk or uh, I'd saw the job she had on the town of Brunswick.
So, do you want me to just make this contract from May of this year because they were using the road?
That makes sense.
Yeah, that makes sense.
You can tour it to my cemetery.
Um. And yeah, it has the same verbiage as the other one. Uh. And then you had a question about signs, right?
Yeah, we, we talked in previous meetings, um, um, trying to get hold of some no ATV access signs for the Blanchard Road and the Pleasant Street.
And Pleasant Street. Do you happen to know where I might be able to get some of those?
Yeah, I, I look in my, we all get that. Both of them.
Okay.
Cause a lot of times they want the plastic ones.
Yeah, yeah.
So we just got an order, I don't know, it's access only or what they
Okay.
Or just a DV trail.
Okay, yeah, because I know that when um, DOT first gave permission, there were supposed to be signs put up, right? Was there?
Yeah, and, and I wasn't sure Bill Bieker had, um, helped us with that and he had said he thought DOT was gonna be the one responsible for the signage on the Greendale Road. Cause it's a district.
Cause we heard, we haven't heard anything.
Interesting.
Cause I just met with Billy. Cause we're doing a municipal grant on Calliope Falls to the Tressle.
Does that road's in rough shape?
No, it is. You know, I, I tend to say it's dangerous. I hate. Sit back and
Yep.
But so we'll be doing that, I think, in October. Cause the number of ATVs registrations are doing still. Just getting very popular.
Well, you're able to use them a little bit longer than you can stormbills these days.
And I'm assuming with that purchase of land in there on the other side of the Tressle, they're shutting that down at ATV, are they gonna keep it open?
No, you can go as high as the Tressle.
That's it.
That's it. It's, it's posted. Went down, oh, Jesus. It went posted it all, but written up.
Yeah, I was in there probably a month ago and I saw all the new signs and everything.
But what, what's happening is the landlord is like AFM warehouse. They don't want a single trail to connect one club to another club to another. They don't want people to one just way in that way. sightseeing base, but that was the best part of it.
I'll make a motion to accept the, um, contract with Elliott'sville ATV Club. I just wanna make sure I got the name right.
Bodfish.
But, is it Bodfish?
Yes.
Okay.
Bodfish ATV.
Should we change that?
Just, here, we'll put AKA.
AKA, here you go.
Trail goes in Calliope Falls. Back when I was a lot younger, I helped build that road. It was a.
There you go, right now.
But, uh, where do you go once you hit the Tressle?
Well, that's what baffles me with, cause they didn't want any more dead-end roads. They wanted continuous one trail. But I said, well, we're spending money to go up there and look at the Tressle. Well, it's an attraction. And I have eighty, not my money. I guess that's.
I wonder they ain't got no money.
Well, it's, I've always wondered that too, but then again.
I mean, and as bad as that road is, it definitely should be fixed more or less just for erosion control.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we have any more um information on the ATV traffic pattern that was changed with Abbott Club?
No, um.
I don't know what else we could have them do other than put a little blurb on their thing because there is clearly signs that say,
I know.
do not enter, go this way, and I don't see them.
People can't read.
We sat there and looked at it and.
Cause there is, we got permission, uh you know, with the cemetery, yes.
Yeah.
To go up there as far as the Monson line. Uh well, the man who gave us permission and to meet Monson Club. But I, we put our signs out at the end of the line, but I haven't heard the same back from Monson. So Monson Club, we don't have a, then I would be the Abbott Club, I got.
We can just reach out to them and see.
Yeah, because you come to that and it's. Doesn't, no, no signs for ways until you get down. Almost to the end. Where the C and D corner is.
Yeah.
Right around there.
Should we reach out to Abbott again, I might want to. Notice how I said we.
I think it would be beneficial for both clubs if we could kind of get everybody involved in the conversation, so one club's not doing one thing and the other club is doing another thing when they could save themselves some money or.
Well, how about in the springtime when we do our contracts, we have one meeting at, in both of them together.
Sounds good.
There's a traffic, there's, I mean, they're coming from Brownville and beyond, it comes down here.
Yeah, I mean, you guys are actually a gateway to a vast amount of land.
It's the only way to get to Greenville is to go, come to Monson, drive to Abbott, then you need to go to Greenville.
Yeah.
Why, I don't know, they're gonna have a trail in need to.
I think the biggest problem between here and Greenville is between Warehouse and Rock Hand. They kind of get everything blocked off.
Well, they're doing that more, there's permanent gates going up.
Well, thank you for coming.
Well, it's all right.
I like quite a bit.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah.
It takes a bath house.
Do you want a copy of this um contract?
If you don't mind.
I don't mind, do you wanna sign it too and then I'll make a photocopy of it?
Read my signature.
That's all right.
Signature of you?
Yeah. Beautiful, I love it, let me go grab you a copy.
How many people do you have in your club?
Well, we don't have any young players. It's all, you know, people my age I could give up. But the number of machines going by, cause they're with us, but. We've tried, I mean, a lot of, I send out applications, you know, yearly and a lot of them sold, but I'm too old. That's.
Now that's genuine mentality, people want to.
We had forty to fifty people in in the height of it, but now we dropped down to about thirty-five.
Are most, most of your members from that area?
Yeah, um. It was out of state.
Oh, really, okay, yeah.
Plus it drops off, like I said, after late day, everybody closes, so it picks itself up.
There you are.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yep.
Did she hand out some next, are we getting up and hand out some?
She sent us that email.
I don't.
It had.
Did you miss it?
It had four things and then one of them was a proposed or a state, I think it was states. Recommended or potentially recommended language. Wait, you don't have four attachments?
No. This is when she sent out this.
Yesterday.
Yesterday, okay, let me go back.
I'm gonna say I was in that chain that sued the bike deal.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, four.
Get them.
General Assistance Ordinance, Budget Report, Call Data, General Assistance Ordinance, and Sample Ordinance for.
Oh, you know what, it was only showing two and then I had it.
Quick.
Yeah, there it is, okay, I was just saying, I didn't see two of your attachments because it was only showing that they were two attached, so. We solved it.
Oh, good, I was gonna say, don't tell me I missed that.
Okay, so I'm sorry, I didn't get to see this before.
Um, that's okay, because we can't really do anything, like you guys couldn't adopt it today because um.
It's an ordinance.
It's, well, it's an ordinance, but it has to be posted for seven days or whatever, you guys can adopt the ordinance without approval from the voters. Um, so it it's solely up to you guys. Um, but we do have to have this ordinance to be able to post roads in the springtime. If we only want to do springtime posting, we can do that. But in order to do the no-through trucks, it has to be included in this ordinance in order for us to do that. So.
What do you wanna go?
And so th- there's um.
Does Guilford have the ordinance?
Ye- yes.
Restricting this road, their end of this road?
Not their end of this road.
Is it, is it Abbott though?
It's Abbott, yeah. So.
But if, but if they can leave Guilford and turn up.
And go into Abbott, yeah.
And and.
It's posted from above by the street.
Is it?
Like, all the time?
All the way along there, one fifty.
In this springtime or all the time?
You're just in the springtime.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but is it, like, cause if trucks can access these roads, like they, what, they get to Willamette, can they turn around and go back?
Like I'm thinking enforcement, he's on one fifty, right?
Right, I mean, he would be an exception because, because he's local traffic.
Yeah.
But it would be, it would be weight, it would be based on weight, so like anything over, so one of the recommendations that Pete um had given me is having a sign that says no-through truck is not really enforceable because what is a no-through truck, like you have to have like a weight limit. And and then in your ordinance, you have to describe what a truck is, how many axles it is, what what it weighs or whatever, if you're going to do that. He said that the enforcement, though, is still.
Close.
It it's very difficult to enforce and.
Yeah.
So.
Cause you're not gonna get the state way wagon to come to economy call and.
Sit on the North Gilbert Road?
Is there any towns that you know of that have an ordinance all written for having roads posted year-round?
Like having a no-through truck's road.
Or ordinance that they have in place, that they just have the signs like we do.
That don't have a, that don't have a police department to.
Just so we could see how their ordinance was worded, cause I can see that being a very, very difficult ordinance to write. So if there was somebody that had one all written.
Well, this one, it would be like.
I mean, like that one in the wintertime is fine.
Right.
But when you start talking about year-round, you've got to consider what goes on in this area in the summertime. I'm just trying to make our life easier.
Right.
Guilford might have.
Or actually, the planning board's like easier, right, cause it's all them to write the ordinance.
No.
Well, that's.
This is, this is something that we do, the four of us.
We could've passed it along.
No, you can't, and Guilford may have an ordinance, is it Guilford Center Road, no-through trucks? I'm pretty sure it is.
But, but it's Abbott that owns the road that comes on to North Guilford.
Well, it's posted no-through trucks, when you turn off a one fifty under. Are we open center road? On Guilford Center Road.
They may have an ordinance, I don't know.
I never saw that.
I never saw any.
And then again, I'm, there could be a lot of no-through truck signs that they could put out.
But it would really, it wouldn't be as hard as what you're thinking, because it would just be a section included in this ordinance
No, no.
that defines the North Guilford Road, what the weight limits are and what the exemptions would be.
Still a lot of exemptions.
What, what are examples, because it.
Log trucks, concrete trucks.
Excuse me. But those are not to go travel through there, you have to, you don't want them using the. Like, if you're doing something on that road, that's, that's different.
Delivering or or a logging operation on the road.
Right, but that, I think those are.
That's local.
Yeah, that that's already.
And like the the mill, for example, we had a truck come with slate and one, one pallet of slate comes close to the weight limit and there's twenty pallets on a truck.
Right.
And so, um, I mean, you can't limit that, the ability to drive to the mill.
Well, no, and.
But that's not, they're not going through, cause they come down from town and then they go back to town to take the main road.
Right, exactly, and. And they're like.
I think.
The exact, getting the permit would only come for me anyways and the permit could be good for like on an individual vendor or or whatever, if you're gonna be doing deliveries all the time, you can just have a permit that's this year or whatever. With the understanding that you're going from here to here and back.
Okay, who enforces a permit?
This is your, your jurisdiction, you want an ordinance about a no-through truck, I'll give you an ordinance about a no-through truck.
You can have a light for your truck, you can pull people over.
No, um, I I mean, I, like, we can, we can look at a, a, you know, a sensical approach to it, I mean, it's only as good as enforcement and we know that enforcement is non-existent, so.
We just have to make sure that this is done.
But we definitely.
Before the springtime, because we need this before we post roads again.
Right, we definitely want to be able to propose it in spring.
No, I don't think there's any questions as far as the spring motions.
Well, I know.
Pretty much everything.
Well, yes, but like that piece gets included in this ordinance and I only wanna do this one time.
If we can't enforce it, I'm not sure what good it's gonna do being in there, yeah. I feel the same way, but.
Then why do we have speed limits? Well, it's the same thing.
Well, they enforce, the the police enforce speed limit. Um, they don't often, I mean, they might enforce it, they might not, and sort of like ATVs, they don't, nobody enforces it right now because they're fighting over who has to enforce it. So, I mean, it's, it's, I mean, we can include language, I suppose, but I like. Uh, you know, the vast majority of the, the trucks are staying on six and fifteen. Um, which.
Not all of them.
I said the vast majority, you're not gonna stop the random truck from doing it, you're just not, like, it's not enforceable. It's unless we get a, a town cop that we, we give scales to, it's not, there's no enforcement. And so having it in an ordinance, I like, I mean, we can include language about no-through trucks, I I'm fine with that.
It also says, it may be worth considering a creation of a truck group, so instead of labeling, labeling the North Guilford Road, not a through truck, but right labeling the main road a truck group, so that when their GPS tells them to go down the North Guilford Road because it's shorter, they can clearly see a sign that says, oh, truck group this way. Maybe that's.
Then again, they don't follow that either.
I'm not saying the people that are, the people that aren't from here that are following a GPS may look and say, oh, go this way instead of this way.
How many times have you driven down the interstate with a big sign that says, do not cut across median and people just. Right, and the city cops.
There are always going to be people that break the rules.
I do think that um that. I I know there are, there are trucks that that don't follow it, I don't see a a gigantic number, I think if we wanna make it no-through trucks and come up with a, an arbitrary size for that, we can, we just need to do some research, I think, on, on what other towns in our situation and and I can look into that.
Most of your old log truckers have either died, retired, or went to work at something where they can make more money.
Right, I I rarely see, I mean, and I'm not sitting on the.
Plus the fines are so steep now.
Right, I'm not sitting on that road twenty-four seven, but I'm on that road a lot, you know, working down at at the farm and uh I I mean, the only time you, that I see big trucks down that far, and maybe there are deliveries that are happening, you know, we get trucks all the time at Sheldon Slate, every day we have big trucks coming and they've got to get to there, but I assume they're then turning back to town, so that would be some truck traffic that's happening on this end of it. But I've never, I I can't tell you the last time I saw a real tractor trailer down by my parents.
Yeah.
Like I, it just doesn't.
Well, and one of the biggest enforcement issues that Pete was talking about is most of the towns that do have some sort of through truck also have a police department.
Right.
So they have local enforcement there, because state cops are not gonna do it.
Right.
I mean, are we talking box trucks, like furniture delivery, things like that?
Well, if it's, if it's through, then anything over whatever poundage we put on there, it would be considered, unless it's, you know, local travel, then that's the.
You just hope they adhere to it, because there's no enforcement, so it's like the end of the day.
Right.
I'm all for putting a sign back up if we don't have one that says no-through trucks, I don't care.
Well, we do have one sign on one side of the road, but we don't have that sign on the other.
But you understand my point, if they're coming from Guilford and that isn't, if it is posted.
If they're already driving down the road, they're not gonna turn around and it it mentioned that in this little pamphlet about if you do post a road like that, get with the other town so that they have some, some signs.
That was my point. That was my point.
That's what didn't happen when we put the no-through on the Guilford end of the road.
Cause if they, i- if they don't have an ordinance in Guilford, well, there's, there's no sense, right, because they're gonna get, nobody comes that way anyway. I mean, the vast majority. Stay on six and fifteen, the vast majority, because it's faster. Maybe not next summer with construction, but I'm not sure we can take an outlier like a construction project as like it's, it's.
Not forecast.
Temporary, right, they're gonna go back to six and fifteen, but I think putting signs is a smart, smart thing, knowing that at the end of the day, if somebody turns their blinker on and turns down the North Guilford Road.
So you're saying you're in favor of having it in the ordinance?
I'm okay with it being in the ordinance, but I just think it's not enforceable, so I I don't.
I know, I think it, it can come back to bite us if we can't enforce it, but I understand that it's also worth a try.
I mean, I think that's why I was thinking. I mean, I think that's why I was thinking no, no through trucks, I don't even think you need to, to. Necessarily figure out what that truck looks like.
The only thing is, is if you put it in an ordinance. It has to be defined as.
Well, you're just hope, I mean, at the end of the day, it's just a hope and a, a prayer anywhere. Like.
If you just wanna hang up the sign, just say screw it, the sign's on the tree, I'll do that, if that's what you're asking.
I'm, I'm all for writing it so that we can post in the, in the. During the spring, because we all know what will happen if we don't, like the road, it breaks them down.
The spring. Right.
They, it breaks them down, I, like, as far as. Spending hours and hours and hours crafting the, the perfect ordinance, it doesn't exist.
I like this one just fine, if you guys wanna do just spring. Stuff and I will. Go through and add what I think Monson needs and bring it to you in October, if you're fine with just writing it for just spring posting. And if we want to revisit adding through trucks into it at some point down the road, we can do that. If we wanna just leave that one sign up on this end, nobody's come and knocked on my door and said I can't. So I'm fine with leaving it there if you want. I, I just want to know what it is that you want me to do, that's all.
Bring posting, it's all good. That's what I would do.
Okay, so what I will do is recraft this here same ordinance that I gave you an example of to be carried to.
Do we, we, have we had one in the past?
No.
Okay, so we just done.
Yeah, just reposted.
I just, I'm just curious, if every, like, if every town like Abbott and, and, and everybody that posts their roads, if they also. Actually have the ordinance or no ordinance and they just post their roads and everybody.
Well, normally what would happen is this would have been done like, I don't know, thirty years ago.
Right.
And it probably is, was done in like thirty years ago, but like, people are companies of things in this place.
Like, I, 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 I don't wanna see like. Every truck turning down the North Guilford Road, but they're not going to if the six and fifteen is, is.
And they really don't like speed bumps.
Yeah.
And they're gonna try to avoid that road.
And, and just how rough the road is in general, like it, it's.
Could we find out, Guilford does have something now, that would be interesting.
If they do, that's like I was, okay, cause if they do on that end and they're willing to put up a sign on that end and.
Well, that would be Abbott, so I would be reaching out to him.
It's not Abbott, not, not if you go all the, like.
One down, one fifty.
Like, you can't get to Abbott without going through Guilf.
But Abbott would have to have something too, right?
You can't get to the Abbott section of the road without going through Guilf.
On the other end of the North Guilford Road, but they own the beginning of the Bates Road.
Yeah, no. But, but I'm saying, you can't get to that part of the road, you could come across the Bates Road, but you can't get to the North Guilford Road without coming through Guilf.
So.
Or Dover.
Willamette?
Like you can't, like you can't.
No, what I'm.
That's the reason there's only one sign.
Right, cause somebody took it off.
We couldn't put it. We could put it at our town line, but. If you're getting eighteen wheeler, you get to the town line, you haven't.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
There's no place to turn.
So Guilford owns the other half of the North Guilford Road.
Well, no, they own Blaine Avenue up to.
Up that stretch between my Phil's House to the intersection of one fifty is Abbott.
Right, that's it.
That's it, there's just.
That's what I was asking, so in order to put a sign on the other end of the North Guilford Road, it would be Abbott.
Well.
I don't understand, if they're the ones that own that road, why are they not the ones that you took?
Because if, if, it doesn't matter if Abbott has a sign, if Guilford doesn't have a sign, it doesn't matter if Abbott.
Well, I, I know. Coming from one fifty, yes, that makes sense, but then. The placement of the sign would also have to go through Abbott because they own.
It's on their land.
Right.
That's.
Right, but if, if, my point is if Guilford doesn't also have, like, no through trucks on their end. What does it matter if Abbott puts up a sign or we put up a sign?
But that road. Is a state road, or a state aid road.
Okay, does this, does the state have?
The signs up there?
Yeah, no.
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 But I mean. Because they could be going, there's other options, past the, yeah, but.
Well, just Willamette.
They, posted, they posted in the spring.
Right.
One fifty.
Right.
But it's posted above Bodestree, because Dicky Thomas was out on Bodestree. And Jerry Thomas is just down around the corner, and then there was another one down by. His name was Gilwood.
And Jim French is down there.
Yeah, Jim French is down there. So they. Move, the same thing we did here when we put the North Guilford Road posted sign beyond Sheldon Slate.
Mm-hmm.
Because you gotta. That's his business, he gotta have trucks coming and going.
Sorry, I'm not trying to overcomplicate it, I just think it's a.
I was not placing this.
I.
I, what I thought you were explaining to me is that Guilford owned the other half of the North Guilford Road, and that really tripped me up because this entire time I've been in Monson.
No, 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 no.
It's gone to Abbott and now I was like, what is what you're talking about?
But my point is.
Okay, yes, I, I.
If trucks can come up one fifty.
Mm-hmm.
Then it doesn't matter, because by the, if they need to come to Monson from there, they're.
And they're already there, they're not turning around at the Bates Road and coming back.
Right. Right, sorry, that was a long way on there, uh.
But, I'm.
See what I'm saying?
Yes, I do, totally, totally, so.
Just stick with the spring posting.
I, yeah, and I will look to see if Guilford has an ordinance too, just to see that we can look at.
Thank you.
But in the meantime, I will draft the ordinance just for spring posting.
And leave the sign up.
And leave this one.
Yeah, can, can hurt, you know.
I mean, so what's the point of taking it down, it's been up there illegally for however many years anyways, so.
Are you ready? Yeah, general assistance ordinance.
Um, so this is just the yearly update to, um, the maximums, which are the appendices of the ordinance, and so you don't have to. I think last year we had to do the whole ordinance because they changed and updated. The whole ordinance, but this year we only have to do the appendices. Which are just the updated maximums and I included the maximums if you wanted to look at them. But there is quite a few, so they break it down into like utilities, housing, um, what the mileage rate is, what the barrel maximum is. Um. And housing for Scadquis County.
Are we allowed to ask, how many?
People?
Do we have?
Um, like, so this. This year, so starting in July, we haven't had anybody, I think we only had. One or two last year. Um, actually three, because we had two burials last year.
Doesn't.
Um, that GA ended up paying for, so.
So what's the order of business here?
We basically just have the motion to, motion to accept the. Ordinance says, written, I guess?
Updated that.
Updated?
Yeah, updated maximums.
Second one.
I guess.
No, I know, it was a group effort.
Alright, any other discussion?
No.
Alright, all in favor? Sorry, I'm just getting tired, I guess, um.
I, we had it, we was on first one, went there.
Yeah, that's alright. It's all, just the first page, right?
Mm-hmm.
Is there anything else?
Nope, I already added everything I wanted to add to.
Want you to? Alright, I'll second, um, during the, um, eight eleven.
This is what happens when Sue doesn't send me her agenda updates until the day of, so I already crafted it, so I can add it on there. But I did pretty good with updating most of the things that you wanted updates on.
And I think you're whittling away at things that hadn't been adjusted that were getting done, so.
Is that mine?
That list is good.
You know where to put it?
I'll put it in the pile until.
I'll put it in mine because I actually don't know where to put it. We don't, are we also?